Okay, it is 5:03. Why don't we call this meeting to order? It doesn't look like we have a lot of people on, but I'll ask anyway. Is there any public input, any public comments? Hearing none, I don't think there would be any. We will move on. I don't think we have a student report in here. So why don't we go into the continued business and the second reading of the IDBC policies?
Great. Thank you so much. I'll begin by sharing the screen. You should be able to see it on your screen. An updated version of this document that we've been working on together. Again, I want to thank everyone who worked so hard on this, not only our policy subcommittee, but we heard from a lot of our administrators as well as parents in the community, as we brought this to the K-12 Action Team, and also Ms. Conant also worked with Tracy Nichols to add components to this policy, worked with the Department of Education as well. There was a couple of pieces that we wanted to look at again, and so I've highlighted those changes in yellow. So Tim and Jennifer, do you want me just to summarize what these changes represent?
Yeah, I'm still working on my audio, so go ahead, Dr. Daly.
So just to be clear, what we're proposing here, I left language in even though it's cut, but we just added where it says daily recess, we added in outdoor time. Okay.
Noel said she's having connectivity issues, but trying to get it in.
Okay, thank you. So we just, we added the words outdoor time because at the upper levels, it may not be quite, quote-unquote, recess, but it's more time outside. We have the language there about recess being a necessary break for the day and that it should not be withheld for punitive reasons, but we wanted to have something in there, you know, in case there was a repeated concern, especially if something's happening at recess or when there's physical activity that, you know, the administration should be, it should be brought to the administrator's attention for a solution. And I think that helps to meet some of the concerns that the teachers and the principals had. You know, with the language so that it can be flexible to accommodate those outlier situations, but the language is still pretty strong to say that, you know, it should not be withheld or restricted for punitive reasons. So really recess is something that is intact. We are also going to suggest just completely pulling out the wind chill language. I think that was problematic in that the number that was in here was 20. So that would actually be more prohibitive than we see at some schools, and we just felt the administrative team felt that having it spelled out too much can be problematic, but just that language of outdoor play is prioritized with indoor recess as a backup during inclement weather. And then we do have procedures at our schools that are similar to the language that's here, you know, very often we don't have it in the policy language, but you know, it's in our procedures. So we have procedures to speak to following a recommended chart for going outdoors. And then this last part, I know the font is off, but I wanted to use this language for the middle school just getting us a little more time. So we've spent a lot of time with the K-12 Action Team, looking at this across the board. We've identified that we really have some outstanding questions that need to be further explored at middle school. That includes, you know, where it would happen, when it would happen, who would supervise, what equipment we might need. So Dr. Conant really wants to take some time to establish a committee that is made up of middle school administrative staff and students. And so she helped to work on this language that we put in there for this year. So the policy subcommittee reviewed. I believe they felt comfortable with these changes. And the rest of the document is the same as it was in the first reading.
Can you go back to the middle school highlighted section for a second?
I just wanted to take another look at that.
Yep.
And just to be clear on the motion, Patrick, when we get there, EED and JGJ, is that what's being replaced by this?
It's replacing all three of them. So this language, this language is there for students, staff, and for instructional day, I believe. It's the same policy in three places. Same language, so it's replacing all three.
But it's new policy, it's policy IDBC, which was an existing policy, and it's eliminating EED and JGJ.
No, it's, it's IDBC, EED, and JGJ are all existing policies, they're all identical. And so this is replacing all three of them.
And we're going to keep it in three different places.
Yes. So it's the same language for students and staff, and then it's also under, I think that's where it's required to be.
Okay.
I could investigate that a little more, but I'm pretty sure it's just the same language as with the staff and the students.
Yeah, I was just curious for making a motion. I had no questions on the substance here. I was fine with that.
Anything else?
No, this makes sense.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yeah, someone present a motion?
I will move to accept her approval on second reading, policy IDBC, policy EED, and policy JGJ.
I hear a motion, I hear a second. All those in favor? Why don't we have to do a roll call on this? Because we're remote, thank you for reminding me, Scott. So, Scott, why don't we start with you?
Hi.
Tim? Tim? Got to go off mute. Excellent, Jennifer?
Hi.
Noel?
Hi.
And I'm in a "i" as well, 5:00 passes.
Very good.
Excellent. All right, why don't we go to the next order of business? Dealing with the new business and the both the school committee and superintendent goals. If you don't mind, why don't, I'd actually like to reverse this, if that's all right. Why don't we start with superintendent, if that's okay?
Sure. So I will just share what I have here. I shared some documents with you related to my progress with my goals. This is a formative evaluation at this point, and I just want to provide an update. We're just moving a little slow here, see if that screen.
Yep, we got it.
So just wanted to walk through my slides. So just to remind you, so I have four administrative goals, a student learning goal, professional practice goal, two district goals. I am in a two-year cycle, so I'm in the formative, year one. And the goals can be started progressing, met, exceeded, or did not meet. So it would be natural to be progressing in year one of two. But if I did meet or exceed them, that's fine too, and I would just do something else and amend it for the second year, but I I did provide my progress report as well. I think I am in that progressing in these old areas. If you were providing the same ratings as the prior summative evaluation, there are no comments that are needed. So in the document I gave you, I did share what those summative ratings were. And you can provide oral comments as well. So the summative would be at the end of next year. And as always, I provide regular updates to you on these goals throughout the year. So just a quick overview and reminder what the goals are. I'm working on, the first goal is really talking about focusing on all students having access to advanced placement courses at North Reading High School, and then also getting all of our school improvement plans to reflect measurable outcomes. And having this data to measure success of NRP-25 and the new NRP-2030. So in order to get there, what I've been doing is continuing to work on our school improvement plans, our administrative goals, every monthly meeting that I go to the schools, part of the conversation with the principals is I ask them how they're doing with their school improvement plan and their administrator goals, which are also connected. And we review that on a monthly basis so that we have that through line. They, you know, a major part of what we did this year, as you know, was we hired two new administrators. And I wanted to, you know, one of the things that I was really looking for with those administrators is their experience using data to drive decisions. So when we talk about these essential data-driven questions like, you know, who are the students who have access to advanced placement courses at the high school? And advanced coursework, and what do we need to do to address those challenges? You know, I think I was able to identify Dr. Meyer, someone who would be excellent to guide us through that as we move forward. We've been working a lot in providing feedback to administrators as they align their goals with their school improvement plans. And we've been doing these focus walkthroughs this year, Mr. Queen, Ms. Barrows, and Ms. Pat, who are our multi-district coordinators, have really worked on that with us. So lots of work there for goal one. Just as an update with the elementary schools, we have, and they've shown you this through their presentations, both for school improvement plans and when they did their school presentations. But what we've been working on at each level there with their school, their, you know, MCAS and HIGRANY-based goals, DIBLs-based goals, professional development they've been doing. We continue to speak about the need for those interventionists. We really felt the loss of those part-time positions. And as you know, we weren't able to fund our vision of having full-time interventionists. So we're trying to still gather this data and use the data to inform the interventions without having the interventions, which has really been a challenge. However, you know, we're doing the best we can with the resources we do have through Title I and through our existing staff, and our full-time teachers and special educators. So at the middle school level, again, middle school really took the lead with our walkthroughs. And they have been developing on restorative practices and MTSS. And looking at MCAS and their common assessments, we developed their data-driven goals. At the high school level, they have updated their goals a little bit this year. Continuing to focus on MTSS. A goal standalone, really looking at the NIESC reaccreditation, which is going to take place this October. Continuing to talk about blended learning and how they're using technology, but then looking at this goal here with, you know, using relevant data to make, with special attention for equity for all students. So that's the goal really aligned with my goal that we're looking at. And this is, you know, I'm going to meet with Dr. Meyer to continue these goals for her goals and to continue, you know, looking at what they're looking at with the school improvement plan for next year. High school's fourth goal is also looking at student voice across all areas. And finally, continuing to work with the focus group to look at power blocks. So that's been a little bit on pause this year as we've transitioned administrators, but it's definitely something I've already talked to Dr. Meyer about, looking at what we can do with that power block and how that looks for next year. And middle school, it wasn't really a school improvement plan goal, but because of the changes that we had to make to the schedule due to the budget cuts, we were able to kind of move ahead and look at a new schedule that has an intervention block built right into it at the middle school. So we're going to see that as well. Are there any questions about the goals, or should I just go through them all, or what do you think?
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Overall. And no, you don't have to go through everything. My question generally is this. Obviously, the big, the big question mark for all of us is money, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, so my question to you is, how would you anticipate the goals or the ability to achieve these goals to be impacted one way or the other, based on whether or not we get override, or based on the impact of projection, financial projections for the town? Which obviously you and I sort of have the same information as to what we're already projecting for next year.
Yeah, it's a great question. I would say, you know, we're going to do as much as we can with what resources we have. And for this goal, doing the data dive and looking at the data and the inquiry of what the root causes may be of these issues are not going to be as impacted, but the actual work to solve the problem and, you know, once we've identified which students are not achieving success and identifying what needs to be done to help them, that's going to be the harder part with the resources we have, especially staff. And we're moving in opposite direction by reducing staff when we want to be able to provide more individualized support for students with their needs. And as we know, it also, you know, saves money down the road because the more students that we can help early on within the event in third grade, may not, maybe students that don't need you know, special education support, help placements, or other issues as they get to middle and high school. So that's the reality of where we are with goal one. With goal two, I'll just say this is about, you know, continuing to work with the administrative team on our new administrative evaluation rubrics, using what-to-look-for guides, culture-responsive teaching practices, and then also working with Mr. Queen on transitioning all of our educators to the new rubrics, which we have started with this year, and will fully implement that in the coming year. So we're doing sort of half the staff and then the second half of the staff as they re-up their goals. We've done a ton of trainings with our teams. We have applied for several grants this year, hate crime prevention. This was for last year, $50,000 diversification. We never received that grant, but we still participated, did all the work, and had a team that was trained. And our state of supporters of schools grant as well was very much connected to this work, as was our K-12 Action Team. So we are continuing that into this upcoming year. We're going to reapply for hate crime prevention. Diversification, I think there's a little bit of new life in that grant. And so I presented at the conference last week, and there was someone there from the Department of Ed who said that this might be a great grant to think about applying either individually or through our collaborative. I presented with the collaborative on our model, our shared model with Ms. Pat and Ms. Barra. So it was well-received by those in the room and by the Department of Ed. So they encouraged us there. And also for another year, state of supporters of schools, and anything else that comes along the line. So that funding of those resources will certainly help us achieve the goals for goal two. But another big part of goal two is our teacher training and teacher professional development. That's Title IIA is a large piece of that, and that's one of the grants that's currently not funded. Those funds are all being held at the federal level.
I would probably put something on here noting some of those sorts of things so that we can sort of come back to it. I mean, it could just be as simple as a star and a footnote type of thing.
Sure.
Because my guess is there are going to be a lot of these, potentially a lot of these things. Some held at the federal level, some because we don't have funds at the state or local level, that sort of thing.
Sure.
And then that just highlights the fact of like, you know, our assumption in doing this plan is we're we're progressing either as we think we will or as we want to. What happens if we don't? That's all. You get the point.
Yep, I will absolutely add that. Third goal is just, you know, our tradition from NRP-25 to 2030. So the steps that we're taking this year, starting last summer, we met with our team, reviewed and further developed our final year of NRP-25. Spent all time with our critical leaders and teachers framing the year. Throughout this year, our administrative leadership team, we've talked about what that transition would look like. And laid some of the early stages for that work. I saw feedback on the new plan. And I did that during the student opportunity process. I also did it at the end of the year explicitly, using it back to the future protocol. So we have we didn't get a tremendous amount of our return, but we did get some good feedback that's going to help us inform the work we do this summer. And our goal would be to publish an updated NRP-2030 for this fall. So that's really the work that we're doing at our administrative retreat in August this year. So we're looking forward to that. So again, at our summer retreat, we're going to analyze and collect that data. We are going to do this back to the future process. And what that means is you look ahead to year 2030, you say, where do we want to be? And then you go backwards and say, what do we do in '25, '26, '27, and so on, in order to get to that vision for 2030. So this is the same process we've done in the past. And I realized the other day, this is my fourth plan that I've been through. And this is now the second one that I've laid as superintendent. So this is, this is a time to look back on what we've done in the last five years, and then to think about where we want to go in the next five. But that is what is lying ahead for the second part of these goals for next year. Goal four is about looking at our multi-tiered system of support. Working with Director of Student Services, Ms. Conant, very closely on this. And talking about all the work that we're doing across our schools, how we use our intervention blocks and use the power block at the high school. So again, this is similar to what I talked about in goal one, but this is the actual action step directly around the intervention blocks. So we are continuing to identify what it looks like in elementary, middle, and high school. That power block discussion is very much still on the table. I had a lot of discussions with Mr. LaPret and Ms. Alonso. Continuing them with with Dr. Meyer, and I had it with the students as we went through the principal search process. We asked the students a lot what they thought about power block, what they thought about the rethinking power block study for the last couple of years. And their take was we gave a lot of input, we tried things, and now what? So there's a lot of fertile ground here that I think Mr. LaPret thought would be best explored with the new administration, to take that data and to figure out what's next, and to maybe pilot some things this year. So I know Dr. Meyer and Ms. Alonso are excited about thinking that through. And really thinking about how can we use differently to make gains for students. I think that's a big part of this conversation that we need to revisit. It's not just about changing it and what privileges students have, and, you know, somewhat can they use their phone, can they use a device, uptime, downtime, all that, but also how we can use this as an intervention period. So lots of work to be done there. We've got the middle school leadership team has put in so much work on their new intervention block. This year, they're calling it an extension block. But as I mentioned earlier, I'm just saying it again, we reduced all of our part-time interventionists were cut, and they were not replaced. And then, you know, we're going to continue to advocate for those full-time interventionists to be added at all levels moving forward, so that we can fully implement these ideas that we have.
And I think that's, I think as we approach doing override, you know, I think it's not a mystery that we're heading in that direction. Those are the sorts of things we'll catalog to say, okay, how do we come up with our numbers? And these are the sorts of things that we'll have to take into consideration.
Okay. So that's what I had to share. As far as feedback, I'm not sure. Noel and Jeff, you've had a chance to discuss?
So
Go ahead.
Before we move on, anybody have any questions about the goals?
Jeff, just one quick thing. I think kind of thinking back on what you were just saying. I think we want to make sure that we're clear, especially as we talk about the 2030 goals, about how that will translate budgetarily and be crystal clear on how we communicate that to the community. Because I think we have to appreciate that there is going to be certain things with the budget constraints that we have just to maintain the level services that we do have. And a lot of the things that we're talking about here, while they can be accomplished within the budget, some of it will be additional funding. So how do we how can we sort this and so people can digest this information would be just one ask I would have.
No, and I tend to agree with that. And that's sort of where I was going before, of like, even if it's, you know, even if at this stage it's just a notation of which ones have budget impact or which ones are dependent on potentially addition. Well, it's two different things. One is things that are, if even if we stay just the way we are, you know, what'll go through, but then there are these other, these other elements of some might need additional funding and other things might actually be cuts based on potential cuts to the Department of Education or federal grants or that sort of thing. So one is like, we need more, the other one is we might actually get less. So it's, it's just sort of figuring out what has impact on money. And then, then we later on discriminate between what, what goes into an override. You know, Scott, you've got your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the only thing I wanted to say is like, let's just not lose focus. This is about the evaluation of the superintendent. And I just want to make sure that we don't, if he can't accomplish things because of budgetary issues, that's an important thing to note. I don't think that means we should try to lower the goals or lower the standards, but at the same time, when we're evaluating the effort of superintendent, we have to make sure that we're not, you know, if the reason he's not accomplishing something is because of budgetary issues, we need to be able to note that. But that, you know, doesn't mean we shouldn't strive for what we need and, you know, and it doesn't mean that Dr. Daly is not, you know, doing a good job just because of our budgetary issues. So.
No, no, that's the underlying theme of where I was going. Exactly. Um, yeah, things that are outside of, I'm pretty sure Dr. Daly's powers do not extend to the federal government's, the grants that they offer. Powerful guy, but I don't think he's quite at that level yet.
We can advocate for sure.
Yeah, and agreed, but advocates, but if that's also not part, nor should it be part of these goals, you know, we all should advocate in you as well. But whether you advocate or not, federal grants are still outside your control ultimately. So that's, that's, I totally agree with that. Any other comments or thoughts? Okay, why don't we move to the formative evaluation elements?
Do you have anything to share? Do you want me to share the blank document?
You can just share, just share what you've got. I mean, as far as I was concerned in looking at it, you know, I wrote a few things down, but then thought, you know, ultimately, it felt like I was just hearing my own voice rather than writing something more substantive, because a lot of these are in motion. For example, the process by which we hired new leaders is great, but it's tough for me to say other than the process was good because they're just starting and they seem great and they seem like they're going to meet the need. And that, I guess, is just another way of saying it's in progress. And so to me, most of these end up being in progress.
Yeah, so what I, what I shared here was just, this is sort of my report with you, that, you know, this is the mini year. Along with the narrative that I just gave you, this is, these are the goals themselves, fully developed and aligned to the rubric, and I'm progressing on all of them. That's where I believe I am. There's none that I haven't started, and there's none that I've met or exceeded at this point. And, you know, overall, this is the, as I mentioned, the way it works. You don't need to necessarily give feedback if the ratings have not changed. So I just checked that box. I'm not sure what direction you're going, but you
No, no, that was, that was the direction that I read the instructions to, and I agree with that at this, at this point.
And those are the ratings that we were on last time, so.
Yep.
Now I'll leave it to you for any discussion.
Yeah, so for me, and this is where I started with it all. I, I feel like we're progressing in the right direction for all of these. I feel like they are the right goals to have. The next year is going to be pivotal in terms of how we fund all of this. I think more than, I think almost more than any year I've been on school committee, I think the next year will be will be pivotal in terms of funding. And I mean that both at the federal and the local levels. In terms of whether we actually achieve an override and/or whether or not federal money is freed up and continues to float to the municipal level. and continues to float to the municipal level, through the state. Um, and I, I don't have a crystal ball for either of those. Um, but I have to think that will impact these plans. Again, no fault or, um, or problem with the direction we're going in. I just get the feeling if things don't go our way, we may end up having to reconsider some of what we're doing, some of the goals. And again, that's not, that is not a reflection on the, uh, on the evaluation. It's a reflection on just the nature of, of the beast. Um, but I think all these are the right goals, and I think we are progressing in the right way as we need to, and as we can. Um, any comments from others? I mean, there are other things I'd like to say, but I don't wanna dominate too much.
I think Dr. Daley's doing an excellent job, and I agree with him. Um, he's progressing in all of the goals, and nothing more to add.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to add that I just, um, I had not realized that I was not getting my email push notification, so I, I am so sorry. I have a few emails from, um, both for, from Dr. Daley and from others that I did not see in, um, because they weren't pushing. So if I have not responded to anyone, I just apologize. I just finally figured that out when I just logged on to my account now. Um, so, and I just fixed it, but it just took me a little time. Um, anyhow, so, but that's not really related. I just wanted to share that.
Fair enough. Um, Jennifer, Tim, anything, uh, based on what you've seen?
No, I agree. I think we're making good progress. I think these are very goals, and, and Dr. Daley's doing a great job. I think we're, I think we're really lucky we're here in North Running.
Totally agree.
I don't have anything to add, so we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and, and I know I've made a whole bunch of comments about money, but let me just, uh, leave by saying how deeply appreciative I am of, uh, of the work that you and your team are doing. Um, you know, across the board, your immediate staff, uh, and the people that we've brought in, really appreciative of the, of the work that everybody's doing. So thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So I will, um, report what's here as the, as the rating for what we need to report to the state.
Yep, and I can, I'll be in design, assuming this is one of the things I'm signing.
This could be one of the things, yep.
Okay, yep.
All right, thank you very much.
All good. Uh, now, why don't we go back to the first piece, um, and that was the school committee goals. On the screen.
So I'm not sure where you are with these. Um, we didn't get a chance to touch base, but, you know, the, typically, we would review the goals from last year, and then also this document. So I don't know whether that was computed, or whether you just wanna share, and then we can look at it again in August, but you just wanna share out what you're looking forward to collect.
Yeah, so.
The rules that are copied in here, and then you would evaluate as a team, sort of, where you are. I don't know if you wanna report out and talk about.
So in, in the past, what we've done, I, I do wanna talk this through a little bit. In the past, what we've done is the evaluation committee has sort of gone through, and sort of done most of the evaluation, uh, and then we come back and say, well, really, it should be the people who are assigned to it. Um, what I'm gonna suggest this time around is for those who have assignments in here, and they're all listed, we, we did that, uh, last time around, and we are all still here for these, I would suggest we each go through before August and do our own, uh, line-by-line assessment of each of these. And for those of you that are on, where there's more than one person assigned, uh, you will be responsible just to make sure you're coordinating with the other person that you're assigned to, and make sure that there is some level of alignment on, uh, on the progress that is or is not being made on that line item. Um, and that we can do that, and, and the request I would have is make sure we do that roughly a week before we meet next, and that way we can circulate that amongst the team. Uh, and, and, and if you want to send me, so, so that we're not all overlapping this stuff, I'm more than happy if you want to send me what the, uh, what the line items are and where it should be, that is fine too. That way, we're all not sort of, there are like forty-seven documents floating around. Uh, I'm happy to, uh, to aggregate all of the rankings. Um, but if we could just go through them roughly a week before, that would be great, and just shoot it to me, and then I'll, I'll be happy to deal with it. Um, so that's my general, um, that's my general instruction, if that, if everybody's okay with that. Anybody, feel free to disagree with me if anybody thinks I'm off.
Jeff, just to clarify, with me and Scott on something, I would send an email with you and Scott, and Scott and I would agree, and then you'd put it in the document.
Yep, or, or if you want, you can even send it to me afterwards and say, Scott and I think this. Either way is fine.
Jen, I, I, I think I've something like that too. One could mark it, the other one could just look at it and kind of reach out if you disagree.
Sure.
You know, like if we, yeah, and, and in terms of doing it, just from a technical standpoint, like if I'm looking at them, there's that little arrow on the top. Do you want us to just change it to like a, a plus in it, or a, or a fully filled-out one? Like if you go to Leadership in Governance, uh, Dr. Daley, when you're scrolling there, if you go to Leadership in Governance, like I'm on one right now, you can see, if you look at this top right, if I change it to this, does that not change it? No, it changes the entire box. Never mind, it doesn't change.
You can do it however you want. I will deal with the original.
Okay.
Just make a copy of it, and I'll, I'll deal with the formatting and make it look pretty or whatever. I'm not worried about that.
Right, and you can, like, maybe highlight the box that you choose, or something like that?
Yeah, any, any way that clearly notes what it is you wanna select, I am fine.
So, and we're just doing this at the bottom part, the top part, your evaluation subcommittee's gonna do, and we're just gonna add comments later on if you'd like?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so the, and you'll, and you'll send that to us, and you'll want, you'll want comments on that afterwards, so.
Yep, same thing. Uh, well, that will be done, uh, no less than a week ahead of the next discussion. And then, again, similar to what we've, this is similar to what we've done in the past, uh, if you have additional comments, just put your initials, uh, on the comments.
Yes, 'cause all of them there right now are me.
Yeah, I don't know, uh, I think this is just the version you had. I don't know that this is the final one that went out. I know I put lots of comments in.
Yeah.
Although it makes you look good, so.
This might have been an older one. Oh, this is riches, like there's rich in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, all right, any questions on this? And obviously, if we need to, you know, in, in some of these instances, you know, I, I haven't gone through them all, uh, this instant. If something doesn't apply, say it doesn't apply, say why, all that fun stuff. I mean, we've, we've all done this sort of thing before. Any questions, comments, thoughts?
Cool.
I'll take a cool.
And those documents are accessible from this agenda, but they're also in the shared.
Yep. And I can, if anybody wants, I can give a link to the, to the folder as well, if anybody doesn't have it. Um, okay, why don't we keep rolling along here on a beautiful summer day? Um, why don't we go down to Routine Matters? Uh, I don't think we have any minutes to go through. Um, so that brings us to the budget update. Why don't we talk about that?
Michael, do you wanna share the screen, or? You won't need to do it.
Um, if you have it, you, you can do it if you want. You have it right there.
I'll do it, yeah.
I had it, and I just clicked off it. Okay, so, um, I'm having a report this evening that we were able to close out fiscal year twenty twenty-five successfully. Everything went smoothly with, um, the closeout process. And there were no real surprises, everything we had been talking about, um, as we approached the final quarter of the year in terms of, um, where we had some, some surplus funds in certain cost centers, and some overages, and what we were able to do to, to meet the, the, the carryover projections, um, to try to put ourselves in as, as, as solid of a financial standing as we can, given the circumstances heading into this current fiscal year, um, we were able to achieve. So this is the final report, um, that is included. Um, as I reported, we did have some funds and some savings in certain areas around supplies and materials, just due to kind of conservative spending. Um, there was some savings in utility costs and some maintenance costs as well. Um, due to some leave of absences that typically occur with teachers and paraprofessionals, in some cases, and other, other, um, bargaining units, we, we had some, some savings in some of those supply accounts or some available funding. So essentially, all those were able to be used, as I reported in the past, to, um, prepay the special, special education tuitions that were partly of that what were budgeted, as we do budgeted amount of prepays that offset the subsequent next year, this current fiscal year's budget. Um, and we were able to purchase some, some materials to help us prepare, prepare for this school year. So that, that was the, the process that we went through. It was very similar to what we've done in the years past. Um, as we've made these reductions over the last couple of years, I will say, there's been less and less flexibility sort of available at the end of the year, even though we've been very, very conservative, very vigilant in our spending and watching our expenses. There's always gonna be, um, unexpected or unanticipated, you know, unforeseen expenses that do come up in areas of, of, of maintenance, um, special ed, for certainly this year, that we, that we will need to address, but, um, this is, we, this is the, the expense side of the equation. As you can see on the expense side, we, um, the, the largest, uh, you know, overage was the special education tuition line item, and that was designed, um, as we prepaid as much of a, of a prepayment amount as we could with pooling any available resources from the other, other cost centers, as I've mentioned, mentioned previously. So we certainly met our, our one fifty to two hundred thousand dollar benchmark of what we had forecasted during the budget process, and we, we almost doubled, we, we essentially doubled that, um, and prepaid up, you know, a little more than four hundred thousand dollars. Which, um, you know, I think is, is a, a good approach to take, given just the unanticipated and just the volatility of the unexpected and what could potentially be coming. Um, we, we wanted, we wanted to be able to, to address that as we head into this next fiscal year. So I think we were able to do that to, you know, to this greatest extent as, that, that we could. Um, if you scroll down to the salaries. Patrick.
I think Scott's got a question.
Uh, yep, go ahead.
Well, you, you can finish that, Michael. I'm, I'm happy to wait until you have your question afterwards.
So the salary amounts, we, so yeah, we had some, some surplus in salaries, noth- nothing, um, totally unanticipated. Um, if you look at, you know, certainly some of these overages, the higher overages are due to some leave of absences and some, um, and some turnover in staff that led to some savings. Um, and then we did, because of that, we, we exceeded some of our substitute budget in that final quarter of the year, which is not unusual. And that has happened when we've had a high amount of leaves and turnover, especially in that final quarter. Um, so we talked a little bit about that throughout this school year, but essentially, we're ending the year with a little more than eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Um, that would be turned back to the town. So that was the typical report. There was also the report that we put together with the major cost centers, which is sort of the town meeting report that was included, that that does get sent to the town finance director as well. So she has that information for next year's town line. Um, any other questions? Any questions? I guess we can open up to questions, and I'll just look, we have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Conley, just three questions. Um, first one, I know when we were making the budget, there were some questions about outer district placements, and there were some that were still kind of up in the air. Do we know right now, or the budget that we, that we passed for this coming year, are we, or do we know if there's any additional move-ins or, or placements that are gonna already be higher than we expected?
Um, good question. Right now, the answer is, is no. I, we don't have any concrete data on, on that. Um, so we're still, we're still watching some of that for a, a couple of circumstances and what may happen with a couple of situations, but we don't have any concrete. So right now, no.
Okay, um, second question, how are we doing on bus passes and, and?
Bus pass is doing well. Um, the, it's trending right where we've typically been, so even with the increase, um, we haven't seen a drop in registrations or participation. We're right around at eleven fifty am- amount of bus passes sold, and that's typically where we are right now. We typically see a bit of a surge in August. Um, we've been able to get everyone off the waitlist. Though there were times, there was a waitlist at various times over the last couple of months. Um, the last, you know, six weeks or so, but Rosalie McPhillip in my office has kind of worked her magic to make changes to stops, and get everyone at the moment that has registered is, has a bus pass.
Okay, and then, do you know the final number was for the universal, uh, cap, if like, how much was given back?
Uh, yeah, that was less than five thousand dollars. It was, I think it was under, a little under four thousand, so we didn't get a huge, um, amount of requests for the universal cap. There was only a few families that received a refund, actually.
Okay, and, and, and as of right now, when, where we sit July twenty-first, I mean, the deadline for buses was, has already passed, correct?
Correct, it was like the middle of the mid-May.
Okay, and so as of mid, you know, middle to end of July, everybody that's requested a bus pass has one.
Correct.
For a minute. Thank you.
Yes?
Awesome. Uh, okay, anything else for, uh, for the budget update? I assume that was, that was about it?
Yeah, nothing. If there's any questions, but just, it was nice. Um, it's a lot of work that goes into it. We get a lot of help in the office, particularly by, um, Sabita Pye in my office, who some of you have met, know, and she does an exceptional job getting those invoices in and reducing the amount of carryforward balance into this year, so, um, I appreciate all their assistance.
No, as usual, outstanding job putting this together, so thank you. Uh, any other comments from, uh, from the committee? Lively bunch tonight. All right, why don't we move on to staffing, which is up right now?
Well, if you get ahead of yourself.
Yeah, all good.
Um, just very quickly, there's a lot, uh, here just to share, but I'm just gonna go through. Uh, quickly, we have hired, uh, new music teacher at the bachelor school, Cassandra Conway, Nicole Kelly is a grade four teacher, and Lisa Lovella full, now fully as the school adjustment counselor at the batch. At the hood school, Kimberly Pork as a paraprofessional, Renee Sari is a teacher in grade four, and Jessica Lucci is a teacher in grade one. Um, at the middle school, Enloise Seki, who's a long-term substitute, is now in the role of, uh, special education teacher. Laura Videros, who was a special education teacher, now is moving over to be a social studies teacher. Uh, Katie Woolley is going to be the teacher of chemistry at the, uh, high school. And Miss Amy Rodriguez is a long-term substitute guidance counselor. At the district levels of shared, Mr. Campabasso, Chuck Campabasso, moving from, uh, teacher to director of athletics and student activities. James Segroy, a teacher in our district as well, is moving into the administrative role of coordinated digital learning. And we've had some interns as summer help as well, me and Vitozi, uh, helping out in the office. And then also, um, all of this crew that we've hired for building this ground. Uh, Margaret Bamforth is a new food service lead. And then we hired many people for our summer program that have included. And then we hired many people for our summer program that I've included here. I'm not gonna name everyone who's a part of our summer program. And then I've also listed our retirement reservations and terminations.
Awesome. Good group. I know a number of them. They're outstanding.
Yeah, we're very excited. Um, and very thankful to everyone who's worked for us.
Excellent. Excellent. Any comments? Any questions from anybody? Lively group for a summer night. Uh, all right. Why don't we go to bids and donations? Uh, Tim, do you want to lead us in that?
Yes, as soon as I came off MUBIA here. Sorry about that. All right, you ready?
Go for it.
All right. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from Madison and Brooke Crowley to put, be put towards a district-wide fund to be used where it's needed most.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. We need to do a roll call on this. And unfortunately, we have to do a roll call on all of them. So take a little extra time. So uh, Scott?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Now I am an aye as well. Five zero passes.
Aye. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of 1,400, sorry, $14,750 from Brian McCoy, Alvin Woodsman team to be used towards the RISE program at the high school.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments? Hearing none. Why don't we go to a vote? Uh, Scott?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Uh, passes five zero.
I, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $384.46 from the bachelor school parents association to be used towards field day at the bachelor school.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments? Hearing none. Why don't we go to a vote? Scott?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Five zero passes. That was it. All right, next, uh, do we have any uh, social media update?
I didn't have anything, Jeff, for, for this meeting really.
It's okay.
It's been a quiet summer and that's probably a good thing. Everyone, all the, all the electric news, election news is over. School's out. Um, I don't know if there's any priorities for getting things out as we enter the school year, um, as we come into August, but that would be probably the next thing on the list.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think we can talk about that next time. I think, I think as we do enter the school year and as people are starting to come back, I think it would be good to start priming the pump when it comes to uh, budgetary issues.
The, the only thing on social media that I think might be nice to go out, I saw Dr. Daley put out about the um, the new family welcome. Might be something nice from our social media to put something out there about that.
Yeah, good idea. Okay. Okay. Anything else? All right. Why don't we go into the next section, the subcommittee updates? Um, obviously, policy subcommittee met. Um, and we saw the, the fruits of that labor, but any other updates from a, from that team?
Nope, that was it.
Excellent. Excellent. Uh, and then we've got some, uh, some additional meetings coming up. Uh, sorry if I'm looking to the side. I've, I've actually got it up on my screen too. Um, so we've got the substance abuse coalition scheduled to meet July 28th at 11:00.
Can I, sorry, can I actually, we did have a meeting since then and can I give a, can I give a quick update on this?
Oh my goodness, please.
Oh no, that's okay. Um, Noel and I, I, I was emailing Dr. Daley about this. Noel and I are splitting this um, subcommittee, but when Amy presented to us back in the spring with some of our data, I know she mentioned, I know this was brought up at school committee a couple of times, the nicotine-free generation. Um, so the two ways that other towns are doing that is through the board of health or through town meeting. Majority of towns are doing it through the board of health, not town meeting. Um, what the next steps here in North Reading are, the board of health is at the nicotine-free generation coalition, which is, I guess, a little different than the substance abuse policy coalition. Um, this one is headed up by Marcy to hold two public hearings. So they're gonna be doing that on September 30th and October 23rd in the digital learning lab. Um, so I think we need to discuss some logistics around that and we'll probably know more after the next um, subcommittee meeting. But they are looking for, um, you know, support in the community.
Yeah, that's great. Uh, yeah, let us know what, what's needed for it.
Dr. Daley, do you have anything to add after talking to Marcy or Amy rather? Sorry.
Sure, yeah. So I'm, I'm looking forward to attending the meeting on Monday to learn a little bit more as well. But um, you know, through the CIT and through the coalition, we've learned a lot about this uh, this possible language. I've talked to some other superintendents that have passed similar language in their towns. Essentially what this is, is it, it would prevent you from ever buying tobacco, um, if you were born after a certain date. So um, you know, we, we've been, it's been requested that we consult with possibly our school physician to share out some of the dangers of tobacco on, on, on not only children, but on, on everyone in the community. Um, and to participate and show support at the meetings. The actual politics of it is, is something that we're still looking into sort of because there is legislation possibly running and just what role we can take. So I know that even um, the Sukkowitz has, you know, certain things she can say and certain things she can't say at those public hearings. Um, the same for the school department. But I do want to be there, um, you know, and to help facilitate and have these meetings and get the public involved as much as possible. So Noel's communicated those dates. I believe we've reserved the distance learning lab and I look forward to just learning a little bit more about um, about this move forward. And then I think ultimately, I think where we're at is if the board of health hears a certain amount of information at these nicotine-free generation hearings, that they might have their own meeting or hearing, or they put it to town meeting. I believe that's where it's at, Noel. I'm sorry, Jennifer, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So I was gonna see whether these are board of health meetings or Nick, but I think it's a nicotine-free generation coalition public hearing that the board of health, I believe, will attend and participate in, as, as to observe.
And I think Jeff said something to, to think about while we, before we have this next meeting is, you know, when Amy was presenting, we were all um, you know, nodding our heads and, and support, I think of the nicotine-free generation. I think there is gonna be an ask whether we can do something as a school committee in a letter of support or of support or our, as ourselves as individuals. That's just something that, think about what we can and can't do.
That's fair.
Yeah, I think to be, you know, I think there are some arguments against it, which would be local businesses possibly talking about that. Other people just saying about, you know, letting people choose whether they want to, to participate as opposed to legislating that they don't have that freedom or that choice. Uh, but again, this would not be, my understanding is it would not be taking away the opportunity to purchase tobacco for anyone who already has received that. It's just um, it's, it's what it would mean for, let's say, anybody born after a certain date who already does not have the ability to purchase. They would just never be able to purchase in our community.
That is correct, yeah.
And I do have someone joining the call.
Um, I mean, to me, I, I, my questions on it are what would the financial impact be? But it's not questions for here. It's, it's more like uh, um, just generally to see what other towns have seen. Um, but I'm all for it. I, I think just generally it's, it's a good idea. But I agree. I think there's more to think about when we consider whether or not the school committee as a committee can make that recommendation or not, or should make that recommendation. Uh, but I, uh, it's something I'll look into as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, I, I agree. I agree with you all, John. Individually, I agree with it, but not sure where we stand.
Yeah. Let me, let me see what, if anything, other towns have done.
Yeah, I mean, we cannot, and Noel, I'm not sure, I can't attend, I can go to the meeting on Monday, but I mean, I can join virtually. I can't go to the meeting. These are some things we could ask maybe if, if, if Amy has any of that information. I'm not sure if she does, because I think it is all fairly new. So I don't think there'd be a ton of information on financial impact or, or anything like that. But I can see if maybe if other school committees have um, come out in, in support. Uh, it seems to be in other towns it moved a little quicker than this. So I'm not sure if they needed the support, you know, I don't, I'm not sure if there was public hearings or anything like that, but I can ask more specific questions about that.
That'd be great. Well, we can even see if other, other states have done, excuse me, other states have done this sort of thing, even beyond Massachusetts. Like I said, I'll, I'll do a little bit of research on it myself.
I believe, I believe Mr. Chair, through you, I believe Melrose and Wakefield have adopted policies at the board of health, if I'm not mistaken. And, and through you, Miss um, let's say misleaders, um, I keep, it's so manly, but misleaders.
Yep.
Do you know the date of the meeting so I can add it to the minutes here or the um, if you have it, just email me and I'll add it in.
Sorry, the, the last substance abuse coalition meeting?
Yeah, I should, I didn't have that under the subcommittee updates. I'll add it in.
Hold on, let me see if I can just pull it from my calendar. It's not coming up for some reason.
You can just email me that and I'll add it in.
Sure. Oh, actually, sorry. It's uh, July, it was July 22nd.
July 22nd, okay, great.
No, wait a second.
Oh, that's tomorrow.
That's me. I don't know why it's not coming up. I'll email you.
That's fine.
All right, no, got it. June 23rd, June 23rd.
Okay. Uh, anything else from the, the substance abuse coalition?
No.
Awesome. Uh, is there another policy subcommittee meeting that's scheduled?
I think we're, you know, it's out there that we need, we want to try to schedule it to continue to review um, the, the ongoing sort of, we're going through all the different areas. I also want to look at the acceptable use policy. I think there's reason to consider some language around AI and whether that is substantive enough that we need to do a full rewriting, because that, that's a policy that we update every year with slight tweaks. Um, so we do need to set a date for that. And then we also need to set a date for evaluation subcommittee. Um, so.
Yep, that's fair. Um, and uh, administrative reports?
Just very quickly, two quick updates. One is just that our two new principals have started. Um, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Meyer, uh, Dr. Meyer's at the secondary level at the high school. Um, and she's off to a great start. And Ms. Fahey at the little school. Yeah, Ms. Fahey was just recently married and that is her married name that she will be using moving forward. And so it's my understanding that they've written to their staff, met with their leadership team and also reached out to parents. Um, they are working on entry plans at their schools that I am going to guide them through. So um, it's been excellent so far. We were able to meet as an administrative team within the first week or so of them being together. And we're very much looking forward to our administrative retreat in early August with our new team. And then the other point, as Mr. Buckley alluded to, we are on August 20th in the evening. We will be having our second annual new family welcome. And we're very excited to, I'll be sending out something about that as a save the date very soon.
What was the date on that? Sorry?
August 20th.
August 20th, all right. I swear, write that down.
So we are, um, you know, everyone is welcome to attend. We, last year, what we did is we had a virtual and in-person options for people. We had about 15 or so in the DLL and about 15 or so online. So I sent something specifically to the um, those new families that have registered. And then I also put it out sort of widely um, to, to, to come together. We've had representatives from the library, youth services, parks and rec, um, and the town officers there. Um, so that invitation is out to our team as well. Um, and when they can join, we'll join. Otherwise, I will walk through a similar presentation to last year and it just helps people put some basis to names. Um, and learn about some of the buildings and the important uh, opportunities that, that we have to support everyone in our community. So it was well received last year and we're going to do it again this year.
Awesome. I'll try and attend. Uh, do, do, I don't think you mentioned, what time is that? Do we have a time?
Uh, I, I'm going to double check what we did last year, but it's, it's in the evening.
Okay, great. Awesome. Thank you. Um, anything else?
That's all for the superintendent circle.
Excellent. Uh, we don't have any correspondence at this time. So for future business, uh, August 25th, we've got the uh, school committee goals workshop, 4:30. So that'll be fun. Uh, and then we'll have a regular meeting following that at 6:30. And we'll go through the, the fiscal 2027 budget and, and budget goals. And we'll figure out if we're gonna have a student representative, but I don't think we'll have one for that, that call or if that's, uh, that in-person meeting.
Yeah, no, those student reps won't start until the school year begins.
Uh, we need to get them started earlier.
Yeah.
All fun. Uh, okay. And then we've got uh, the September 8th school opening update, which would be great. Uh, and then September 29th, uh, the school committee act, uh, goals, actions plan, so for 2025, 26. Any questions? Any comments? Uh, anything else we need to cover during this discussion? I don't think so, but did we miss anything? Lively group for a summer day. All right, everyone. Uh, I appreciate everybody's time. Uh, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Uh, we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, any comments? Hearing none. Do a roll call. Scott?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Motion to adjourn is accepted. Thanks, everybody, and we'll talk soon.